Welcome, everyone. This is the Board of Education meeting for Monday, June 14th, 2021. Charlie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Calhan?
Here.
Ms. Howard Collins? Dr. Baxter?
Here.
Ms. Roach?
Here.
Ms. Seiden?
Here.
Mr. Westphal?
Present.
Mr. Kerberg?
Here. We have a quorum, and I will be looking for a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of, Dr. Abel?
I.
For personnel, collective negotiations, a matter pertaining to an individual student and/or student discipline. All right.
So move.
All right, Kathy's motion. Barb's second. Charlie?
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Ms. Seiden?
Yes.
Ms. Calhan?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Dr. Baxter?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, we are in closed session. We will return at approximately 7:30. All right, we have Tony on the screen, so I think we are all here. Welcome, everyone. Again, this is the Board of Education meeting for Monday, June 14th, 2021. The Board has been in closed session since 6:30. Welcome. It is wonderful to see everyone here in person, that we can be back to this style and type of school board meeting, and look forward to this continuing as we go forward. Just so everyone knows, we are still continuing to broadcast meetings to the community, so that's why you will see on side monitors, and we will have different camera arrangements set up, so we will capture each aspect of the meeting going forward, and that will be a permanent part of District 202 Board of Education meetings going forward. So Charlie, if you can call the roll.
Ms. Calhan?
Here.
Dr. Baxter?
Here.
Ms. Roach?
Here.
Seiden?
Here.
Mr. Westphal?
Present.
Mr. Kerberg?
Here. We have a quorum. If you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag is on your left. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. All right. So we're moving on down to Item 3 on our agenda, communications. So President's comments, a couple of things for this evening. First of all is a big thank you. Now that the school year has officially ended and high school graduations and middle school promotions are completed, I wanted to once again thank everyone on behalf of the entire Board for their tremendous efforts to make the 2020-2021 school year such a success. It goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, that this was by far the most challenging year in recent memory, if not of all time in our community. Students, staff, parents, administrators, and Board members were all stressed with trying to make sense of what was happening and what we were supposed to do, most especially in light of the evolving nature of the pandemic and the constantly changing guidance from numerous agencies and officials. We may disagree on some of the decisions made and the steps taken, et cetera, but I can say with absolute certainty that everyone involved did everything they could to serve and support our students and staff as much as possible. We look forward to planning for a successful next school year, starting in the fall, and with welcoming back all of our students on August 18th. So again, please accept our gratitude and appreciation for everything that everyone in the community did this year to make this past school year the success that it was. Moving on to summer school, our first week of summer school is in the books. Last week, more than 1,000 middle and high school students started various traditionals and special summer classes designed to help them be better prepared for next school year. More programs are scheduled to start this week at the elementary level. Many of these programs are being paid for with our ESRS grant money. We plan to use nearly 70% of those federal funds on academic-related programs to support our students. And you can obtain more information on those programs on the website, and we will continue again to use that money this summer and into next school year and beyond, as the law allows. So that's my comments. Moving on down to 4.01, Board Salutes. Do my colleagues have Board Salutes?
Yes, I wanted to give a salute to Prince Ross Draper for attending the middle school promotions for Ira Jones and Walker's, or Heritage Grove, and speaking on behalf of Plainfield North and welcoming the incoming freshman class.
Thank you, Heather. Ross always does a wonderful job of that. Any other?
Yeah.
Barb?
I would like to congratulate Dr. Abel and his staff on the wonderful IARS compliance fund that they received from the Will County Regional Office of Education. The comments in the notes section were absolutely glowing beyond recognized as meeting all of their.
Thank you, Barb. Very well done, Dr. Abel and team. The other?
I'd like to recognize all of the dads in our upcoming Father's Day, both staff and parents who support and love all of our children.
Thank you, Kathy.
And I had one. I just wanted to give a shout out for how wonderful the eighth grade ceremonies were. Timber Ridge in particular, I was so impressed by just how student-centered it was. They waited until everyone was all together to give students their awards that they traditionally would do during the school day. So great job, Timber Ridge, and I heard good things about the other eighth grade promotions as well.
Thank you, Tony.
I would like to give a Board salute to Kai Freeman and Droben Point staff, and also to Heritage Grove, and to Danielle. Yeah, Danielle, her first ceremony, and they were both run excellently, and the kids had a blast, and the parents were very happy to be outside and celebrating with their kids. So job well done by both of those groups.
Thank you, Rod. So I think that's everyone, right? All right.
Wait, can I give one more?
You certainly can.
Shout out to the tech team for configuring a way to continue to broadcast these meetings live. I feel like we gained so much more participation and getting knowledge out into the community, and I'm glad that this accessibility option is still there for those that need it or choose to use it.
Thank you, Tony. Very well said, and Russell and Matt are both sitting here in the room, and a lot of the work and credit goes to them, and we will continue to be improving the situation with some permanent camera mounts and things as well, and microphones, so this setup will get even better as we go forward. So very good point, Tony. All right, no special recognitions tonight, correct? All right. So now moving on down to Item 5.01, Public Comment. And on the screen behind me, you should see, yes, our policy on public comment. So just to say a few words, first of all, as we have said, we are so glad to be back in person and that public comment can occur in person once again. We value hearing from our community, and the public at the board meeting is one way that that occurs. There are also opportunities, as you all know, to email the Board at any point through our contact information on the website. I want everyone to know that public comment at board meetings a couple of times a month is not the only way to communicate with the Board. I will also remind everyone that this is a meeting in public and not a public meeting on the purpose of this meeting and public comment is not to engage in debate or discussion with individuals or the public at large, but rather as an opportunity for the public to share your thoughts and concerns with the Board. I would ask everyone to be respectful and observe confidentiality in your comments as well. Observe the rules that are listed behind me, most specifically that we will limit each person, each speaker, to two minutes and total public comment to 20 minutes. If there are multiple people from one organization or here to talk about one topic, it would be welcomed to have one person be assigned as a spokesperson for that group to allow more people to talk and share with the Board on more topics. If your comment has already been shared as well, if you would be willing to defer to the future, to the next individuals as well, to allow us to be able to get through as many of the public comments as possible. So with that, Matt will bring over the podium. We will have a podium there, and we will look to begin. We have the sign-up sheet here. It looks like we have approximately 20 people that signed up. So the first person on the list is Julie Sampson.
Hello. Before I begin, I would like to ask two questions, if you guys would have honor. Do any of you have children in the 202 schools right now? Any of you? If you could just raise your hand, yes or no. Do any of you have a medical license or degree? Raise your hand, yes or no. With that, I'll begin my two minutes. How much money did you spend on the sex survey? Did you poll parents or teachers first to see if this was an issue affecting the majority of kids in the district? Why was heterosexual not even an option on the self-identify section? You are not respecting the religious families by pushing this ideology. Public education needs appropriate for all students. Funny, you had money for this in a cultural competency committee, but you can't figure out how to get our kids back in school full-time or have any other activity back buses. Where are the committees for all the students who are failing or special needs, or the students failing with mental health that I might add to that? Oh, that have been impacted over the last 15 months. 1,100 children have already unenrolled from this school district. That is noteworthy. All of this little survey did was cause more anxiety, more division, more hate. You had an arson attack and a knife fight at Ira B. Jones and Indian Trail within the last month. You represent all children, and you are supposed to have their best interests at heart. Central hosted a spring musical entitled Songs for a New World. One of the songs, "King of the World," was performed by a student in chains, saying how he was the king of the world, chief of the seas, and he moved mountains, moons, and stars. When I called Mr. Kowback at Central to ask him about the meaning of this, he said, and I quote, "King of the world" was a song that was to take place in a jail, which is why the student was wearing chains. He said the song is about hope and overcoming mental struggle of being imprisoned. I told him, to Christians, the king of the world is Jesus Christ. Our U.S. Constitution is based on the Holy Bible, and our Judeo-Christian founders wanted freedom and equality for all of its citizens. Why would we not honor police, veterans, I'm not stopping, and military? I'm not stopping.
Julie, I'm gonna be polite with you.
I'm not done, sir.
But we have a policy, and you want the district to follow its policies. We have a policy.
Policy, I have to get to my point that the parents need to understand that you are not following the Illinois State Constitution or the United States Constitution.
Okay, I'm sorry, but.
You follow guidelines from ISPE.
Julie, I will.
Guidelines are guidelines. You do not have the law on your side. No way to make masks mandatory, vaccines mandatory, testing our children. You are making medical decisions you are all personally and legally liable for. Knock it off. Give her a piece of that baby.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Happy Sunday, too.
Dale Fontana?
What do you mean, everyone? I'm gonna begin with just a personal story. My wife and I moved here to Plainfield back in 1994. When we were considering moving from southwest side of Chicago, which of course is part of this wonderful school district called the Chicago Public School System, we had two choices, either to move to Atlantic or to move to Plainfield. One of the key decisions of our deciding to come to Plainfield was District 202, the excellence that it brought in its reputation. Both of my sons graduated from Plainfield High School, and they're both young men now. And now that's 27 years later, I find myself addressing the Board here about this woke Marxist nonsense. Down the throats of the students without the consent of the parents. This is a big, I can't believe I'm even standing here in the exact same community in which I'm a part. I should really not care because I don't have kids in the school anymore, but I do. First of all, I care as a citizen for the rest of the folks that are here. It's important for the community, for our country. But moreover than that, this is a real estate tax bill. And everybody here, I'd like to know how many people in this room actually own homes. Every one of these folks pays property taxes. And on the property, whether they do it in escrow or whether they do it directly, if they should ever take the time to read the line items here, what they're paying for, okay? Line item number six is Unit School District 202. That's you folks, okay? Two-thirds, two-thirds of my property tax bill goes to pay for all the activity leading this district. Because of that, you work for us.
Yeah.
I want you, as educators, to go back to the mission for which you are charged, and that is to properly educate the students.
Next on the list is Brian, I think it's Kramer?
I'm gonna make this short and sweet. Hello, my name is Brian. I've come to speak to you today against CRT being taught. CRT is spitting on the grave of Martin Luther King Jr. and destroying what he taught on judging people on the content of their character and not the color of their skin.
Yes.
School boards are doing the same propaganda tactics as Hitler, Mao Zedong, Pol Pot, Stalin, Ho Chi Minh, Fidel Castro, the Klan, and ISIS. What tactics are those, you might ask? Attacking a group of people based on heritage, religion, and race. How does it feel to be doing the same thing as the most evil people in history? As a white American, my family never owned any slaves. Most came here in the early 1900s to the mid-1900s. An Italian family faced bigotry when they came here, but instead of being a victim, they persevered and became successful. How is it not racist to tell black and Hispanic Americans that because of their skin color, they can't be successful? I don't know, it sounds racist to me. What you're doing is nothing but socialist, communist, and fascist control tactics.
Yes.
And as having family that fought those evil ideologies, I will continue fighting. Children don't see race. They are innocent. Stop trying to corrupt and brainwash our kids. All you're doing is creating more division, which is, I believe, what you want so you can stay in power and profit from your deeds. Remember, judge people by actions, not actors. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Tammy Perez?
Hi. I'm here advocating for my three-year-old little girl. She's three nonverbal and diagnosed with Level 3 autism. She was not able to attend her first year of preschool last year. She should have been in Bonnie McFatz Leap Program, but because her sensory needs are too severe, she could not tolerate wearing a mask. I was told we had two weeks to get it together, and she needed to be able to tolerate the mask to stay in school. So I had to pull my daughter out of her first year of school because she couldn't handle something covering her nose and mouth. It's unfair to me that you could deny a little girl an education when I have a doctor's note from her physician stating that she has a neurological disorder of autism with sensory processing disorder with impairment of language. How could you deny that she go to school because she can't wear a face covering? Why is your school district above her physician? The school informed me every day that she struggled to keep her mask on, and without two weeks, we had to pull her out of school. My daughter was distraught in school. She could not handle someone touching her face to put the mask back on her. Not only did it cause her mental distress, but it disrupted her whole classroom. I'm here so you guys know that you let her down. Research shows that the sooner a child with autism is exposed to language programs, the greater their chances are to become verbal. This is backed by scientific data. So.
Yes.
Her not being in school could literally make or break my daughter. It could be the difference in whether or not she learns how to speak, ever, and we've already lost a whole year. Your job is to educate our children, instead you're depriving her because she can't attend school because of a disability. My daughter attends 33 hours a week of ABA therapy where she is not required to wear a mask. Why is she okay to be there with no mask, but not your school district?
Let her talk.
You guys let her down.
Thank you. Next on the list is, I think, Tim Collin?
Hello, thank you for the opportunity. Today I want to talk about the issue of the anti-bullying survey. It's a matter of parental rights precedent for parental consent and proof that the district sees no boundaries as it pertains to student sex, gender identity, race, or religion. All parents with children in the district have the right to know exactly what is being asked of their children, especially when personal topics are being discussed. The survey in question was sent to middle-aged and high school students, all of which are navigating some of the most uncertain and in some cases confusing times in our lives. Topics of sex, gender, and religion are topics that should be handled entirely in the home and without the influence of teachers, administrators. The notification that was sent to parents was too far short in its notice. Less than 24 hours is totally unacceptable notification time for parents to discuss such a survey with their kids and decide whether or not they are ready to answer such intrusive and inappropriate questions. The short notice also sets a precedent for future actions from the district as it pertains to matters of race, gender, sex, and religion, and any other topics that the district feels like it needs to be involved in. Precedent matters, and it draws a line for whether or not something is acceptable that is not clearly stated in law. Parents should be notified at least seven days before a topic that's related to race, gender, identity, religion, or sex, or any other topic that lies outside of the district's immediate scope of educating students on a proof curriculum, and include a vote for parental consent by the district and its parents. The survey has also proved that the district sees no boundaries when it comes to our children's private lives. It's been stated that the survey was supposedly meant to address bullying in the district, but I'm not sure why a child's gender identity, religion, or race comes into play at all. These matters can all be addressed generally, but a student's individual sexual identity has nothing to do with anti-bullying. If the survey had anything to do with bullying, the survey would have been conducted by a professional and in a manner that has addressed the topics more broadly. A student's gender identity, race, religion would not have been identified.
Thank you.
The school district has no right whatsoever to ask students how they identify. This puts under pressure on students from adults. They are likely already feeling pressure in one way or the other from their peers.
Thank you, Tim. The next is Penny Munoz, and the last name begins with an S, but I cannot make it out.
I'm here. Hi.
Thank you, apologize.
I'm glad we all agree on a couple of things. That we all pay taxes, and we're all here to represent our kids, and that all kids should be considered and accounted for. I want to thank the Board for including critical race theory in classrooms, and I urge you to include also trauma-based education, because what our community here is doing is causing trauma to our students. Right now, we have a whole community, I'm really surprised for you guys. I see you at Peter Ruby, I see you at the store, and I'm really shocked at you guys. A whole community here saying that our LGBTQ. Okay. Our students that are in the LGBTQ category are kids that look like me. We were told that they are unwelcome in this neighborhood. Doing exactly what, as a parent, I expect you to do, to be there for my students, to be there as an educator, because I'm also a dual-language educator, and I want you guys to understand that, I think you guys are being thrown off by the word "race." See it as the critical human theory. We agree about science. Please visit Dr. Gabor Maté. Please visit Dr. Bruce Perry, who says that it is critical, critical for students to be in a safe and stable relational foundation with thousands of moderate doses of stress to help create flexible stress response capabilities. What you guys are doing is causing stress to your children. I will give you a personal story. My son went to Plainfield Central, kindergarten to high school. Attended, was friends with some of your kids, and at one particular house, he's been going to this house since kindergarten. Junior year, he was told he could no longer be there because he was brown. Do you realize that I was not there to help?
Thank you very much, Penny.
I was not there to help, but this was for white, Caucasian children that had a son that that was wrong, that it was inappropriate.
Thank you, Penny. Thank you.
And thank you guys for doing your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next.
What, brown? Has science proved that?
All right, can we please all be respectful? And it's our meeting, please, thank you. The next is Colleen Percy.
Good evening. I'm here tonight as a taxpayer. I used to be a parent. Thank God my child doesn't come here anymore. Graduated, gone. People forget that you work for us. This school board has been off of a leash for so long that you think you can do whatever you want to with our kids, and that you can spend our tax dollars any way that you see fit. And I'm here tonight to tell you, that's gonna end. We're gonna start holding you accountable, and we're gonna start asking questions, and we want to know where our thousands of dollars of real estate tax goes that you spent without us knowing about it. Dr. Abel, maybe you could fill the audience in this evening on your five objectives that you had to fulfill, and who you need, that your big bonus, or whatever you call it. Two of them that I know of was creating all-day kindergarten or a longer version of kindergarten. One of them was the CCC. What were the other three, and why does the public and I know about that? And how many of you parents who are here tonight, the taxpayers, agree with me? And if one, two? And if you don't appreciate the snide comments on Zoom or the two-minute, the two-minute limit, you work for us. It's about time you realized that. Thank you for your time. Keep it going.
Thank you, Colleen. Next is Brandon Palasic.
District. I attended Walker's Grove Elementary School for five years, Richard Ira Jones Middle School for three years, and Plainfield North High School for almost two years. I'm here today to voice my support for a culturally responsive curriculum in this whole district. Unlike many people here today, I've actually been inside of the rooms of this district. I have firsthand accounts of racism, homophobia, that were used towards me and other students that are of color. My entire academic career, I never once learned about people like me. In fact, the first time I learned about the LGBTQ+ community was when I was called a homophobic slur in fourth grade. For years, I continued to hear slurs in response by other children before I was even properly educated on what it meant to be gay. I believe that if I had had a culturally responsive curriculum growing up, I would not have grown up being ashamed of who I was. Thank you.
Next is Jess McElvein.
Thank you. My name is Jess McElvein. I am the Chair of the Will County Pride Coalition and the Chair of the Plainfield Pride Organization. I am also a parent of twins who are will be entering into the school district, and I am very grateful for the survey. When I was growing up, I wasn't really educated on it. I was very lucky that my parents were very supportive and did talk to me. So I do agree that it should come from home, but it should also come from school. I have a son who committed suicide because they weren't in safe homes, and if they would have had it safety of the school, maybe they would have killed themselves, or they would have turned to drugs.
I'm sorry, Jess. We're not gonna take away of your time, but I'm going to ask everyone in the audience to please be respectful of each speaker, all right? Don't be making comments, all right? Just be respectful of everyone's time to share their thoughts, just like you all. just like you all, everyone has had the opportunity. Okay? Let's be fair and equal to everyone. All right? I'm only going to ask this once. Okay? And speakers, please continue to address the Board of Ed, not the audience, all right, as well, just so that we can keep any tempers from getting more flared than they might already be. All right, go ahead, Jess. I apologize for having to interrupt you.
It's okay. But it is. It's very hard. You do have a lot of homes that aren't safe. So when you do have a school that is a safe space, who will identify you as your true self or call you the correct pronouns, like if they can't ask you, they don't know. Some students aren't comfortable knowing who is a safe teacher for them. When we see this, or in different organizations, I know in one of the schools that I used to, when I attended school a long time ago, we had our parents have to sign off on everything. So so many kids wouldn't even join different organizations because if their parents knew, it would be unsafe for them at home. They'd be kicked out. They'd be living on the street. They wouldn't be accepted. And it's just so, it's really unfortunate. So I'm very glad that you all are taking that time to support the students in this way and actually care for their mental health as well, because that does impact your mental.
Next is Nikki Barr.
My name is Nikki. I am a taxpayer. And I've lived in Plainfield for 16 years. Both my kids attended Plainfield Schools. And my son does go to school here still in Plainfield. And I'm here to say thank you very much. This district has been amazing, not only to my son, but to my daughter with her social-emotional needs. My daughter was bullied and did attempt suicide. And I have a son who is transgender. Scare for him because of the comments in this room and all the hate. I am very happy that he goes to Plainfield District. I think you guys are amazing as far as everything you've done. I'm absolutely fine with the survey. I read it. I knew it was coming before. I'm not sure whether people didn't. We talked about it at home, and I knew my son was taking it. I'm not a public speaker. I'm just here to say thank you for supporting my child and other children who need the help that they can get. Thank you.
Phil O'Sullivan. Did I get your first name right?
Priscilla.
Priscilla.
Hi. I'm Priscilla Sullivan, and I'm representing Plainfield's School District 202 Community Voice. I'm speaking today because families have been completely frustrated with how the district handled this past year, which I'm sure you all are very aware. We see many changes taking place in the upcoming school years. Half-day did not work at all for most students. I know, as talking to parents in the district now, I'm sort of shocked to learn that summer school was limited this year. Some students were turned away because they were told by the district or their principal that their students had not regressed enough, which really boggles my brain. This year is the year that we needed it the most. We needed to expand it, and this district did not do that. And as a community, I feel like our community is expecting the district to lay out these plans in detail on their approach, how they're going to figure out how to limit the learning gap that's already put in place now. And yet, we haven't seen anything. I'm talking details, not just we have a plan. Our group has voided the kids in the district who have been flunking out recently, and the numbers were astronomical, what we saw. And there's more, because we're not taking into consideration the kids that retook quizzes and homework assignments and redid tests to get a better grade, so that they're not getting Ds and Fs. And I'm actually surprised that the district isn't doing more to address those issues and problems. But as a district, we did have time to come up with a survey this year that many families were very upset about. There was much confusion on the survey itself, including teachers counting it as a grade, students not having the option to opt out or feeling that they didn't have the option to opt out. My biggest confusion is that several parents wrote this district asking why it was given. Some even spoke to Dr. Wood, and directly was told the information that was gathered from this survey was going nowhere. It was done as part of performance goal for Dr. April's contract. So imagine how surprised I am to read this weekend an article published by The Patch that now the district has taken a stance that it is anti-bullying or combat bullying. I went back to every email you guys sent out, and it was never in there in the original stuff. But now, all of a sudden, it's now an anti-bullying.
Thank you.
The district never told families anything about it. And to me, I am... This is what you guys wrote. This is Vera's quote. "The data will help ensure all students get equal access to a high-quality Plainfield School District 202 education." So I'm here to ask today, which one is it? Because we're, as parents, we are confused. You guys send out multiple messages, and none of them are the same.
Thank you. Next is Melissa Curry.
I will pass it on. Does anyone want to speak on behalf of the 202 Parent Choice or if there's any representation of Illinois Parents Union? Because I have to leave. Go ahead, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Your name is?
Christina Gingrich.
Had you signed up?
Yes.
Perfect. Gotcha. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm a parent of two, one going into kindergarten, one going into high school. And I have two things that I'd like to address. One is the Cultural Competency Committee Agenda. And I know that it's been brought up several times, but I want to read one of the questions because I actually had to Google some of the terms as an adult who's 36 and, you know, has had kids. "Do you identify as gay, lesbian, bisexual, pansexual, aromantic/asexual, or questioning?" I don't care what anyone is, but pansexual was a new one for me. Aromantic and asexual, okay. More disturbing was that there were seven choices for gender when, on your paperwork for registration, there's clearly two. There were seven choices for gender. I didn't know there were seven. So in addition to this, not just, I mean, and I have friends that are gay. I have friends that are black and gay. I mean, I don't care what you are. So, you know, the fact that we were told that we're... I don't care about what anybody is. But I don't think it should be pushed down the throats of children who have yet to go through puberty. So another thing is critical race theory. And something I've learned recently was that a lot of times, we like to change the wording of what it's called. And sometimes it's touted as social-emotional learning, which sounds really familiar. So another thing I was really concerned about, actually, the committee. And so I went to your website to see what you said and, you know, what was about the committee. And there was some resources. And one of the resources that you guys have listed on your website is "Talking to Non-Poc Children About Racism." Another term I had to Google. Actually, I don't Google. I ducked up GoThings. But non-Poc means non-persons of color. I just want to say one other thing. The commentary was that because Plainfield's predominantly Caucasian, and the school district is predominantly Caucasian, that this is important. Racism has nothing to do about black or white. It has to do with every color.
That's right.
And I think that with everything, we need to stop being so woke and wake up.
Thank you, Christina. And as you can see from the timer behind me, that does expire our 20 minutes. For those of you that did sign up that did not have the opportunity to address this in public, I would welcome you again to email the Board of Education. Contact information is on the district website, and those would be available for med by all voters. Thank you very much for taking the time to come out this evening. Thank you for all of those who did take the time to comment to us this evening. We do appreciate hearing from the community. All right. We will move on to item six on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. This evening, we have three items, which we will take collectively as one vote. So item 6.01 is approval of policies that have been on 30-day public display, which will include Policy 5:10 Equal Employment Opportunity and Minority Recruitment; Policy 5:20 Workplace Harassment Prohibited; Policy 5:10 Staff Development Program; Policy 7:180 Prevention of and Response to Bullying, Intimidation, and Harassment; and Policy 7:180 Teen Dating Violence Prohibited. Item 6.02 is approval of a field trip for Plainfield South High School Band to Orlando, Florida on March 25, 2022, through March 30 of 2022. And item 6.03 is approval of the Certified Personnel Agenda as amended and the Non-Certified Personnel Agenda as presented. I get a motion?
Motion.
Heather's motion? Kathy second. Speech just barely, Tony. Charlie?
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Dr. Baxter?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Siden?
Yes.
Ms. Galan?
Yes.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes. Items passed. Thank you very much. Now, we will jump on down on our agenda to Section 10 for information. Any presentation tonight from... No. Okay, no. So item 10.03, Board of Education Report. Mr. Westphal, Wilco?
Thanks. Wilco, we met on Tuesday, May 25. We approved our expenditures from May, an amount of $111,607.31. We also had elections of officers. And the slate is still the same. I will continue to serve as president. Gary Gray from Lamont will be the vice president. And Peggy Coons from Wilmington will be the secretary, along with Shawn Walsh, who is the Will County Regional Superintendent, will serve as our treasurer. We also appointed committees and appointment of our legal counsel, designation of signatories. We approved appointment of our depositories. We also approved designation of our center newspaper and acceptance of board policies and the establishment of board meeting dates. Our other actions were we approved a budget amendment as our enrollment is increasing now after COVID. We also approved our agreement between the Board of Control for Wilco Area Career Center and the Wilco Council AFT Local 604. That's our teachers' union. We also approved a 2.5% support staff raise for fiscal year 2022. We also approved the hiring of two students for summer employment at $13.50 an hour, which will handle some custodial maintenance and grounds work. We also approved a bid for parking lot work seal coating. We also approved compensation for our CAN exam at $25 an hour. We also have some field trips that are going to be coming next year. We had a special meeting last week, which, or I'm sorry, yeah, last week, which Glenn attended on my behalf to approve our replacement of the HVAC unit on the roof. And also, I'd like to recognize some of our students. Wilco welding students competed at an ETI School of Skilled Trades competition held on Saturday, May 5. The grand prize opened to seniors only. It's a scholarship good for 50% off of ETI tuition costs should they attend, as well as other prizes for the runners-up and participants. The following students were recognized. Zach Baker, Jr. at Plainfield South; Jad Azashi, Sr. at Plainfield South; Natasha Lukcheck, Sr. at Plainfield Step; Alvin Ackerman, Sr. at Plainfield Central; Jessica Dybus, Sr. at Plainfield Central. Wilco students have placed first for the past four years in this competition, and for the second time, first place by a female welder, which was Jessica Dybus of Plainfield Central. So congratulations to those students. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Rod. Appreciate that update, as always. And thank you again for agreeing to serve as Wilco president for another term. That's a passion of yours, but it's also very valuable for the success of Wilco and all of the students that our district and the other districts that participate in Wilco send to those programs. So thank you, sir. All right. Jumping on down, we have no unfinished or new business. So item 13.01, Freedom of Information Request status.
Unfinished business.
I'm sorry?
The way that you're talking.
No, so that's under public comment, and that is defined by board policy as 20 minutes.
It's been straight time, right? And we haven't had a public board meeting in 15 months.
But the community has still had the opportunity to engage with the Board of Education throughout all of that period. Thank you. Dr. April?
No.
We have received six Freedom of Information requests since last Board of Education meeting. One from Michelle Colby, a community member for materials regarding emails between Dr. April and the APT president between April 1 and April 30, 2021. That was received June 2, due June 9, completed on June 4. Secondly, Karen Radulovich, a community member for materials regarding the Cultural Competency Survey, received June 4, due June 11, completed on June 4. Number three, Julie Sampson, a community member for materials regarding middle and high-school registrations, received June 8, due June 15, and that is in process. Number four, Julie Sampson, a community member for materials regarding the Plainfield High School Central Campus Musical. That was received on June 8, 2021, due June 15. That is in process. Number five, Julie Sampson, a community member for materials regarding district policies for staff social media activity, received June 8, due June 15. That is in process. Number six, Julie Sampson, community member for materials regarding district rules for masks and vaccination mandates and insurance policy regarding tort immunity. That was received June 8, due June 15. That is in process.
Thank you, sir.